Please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Improve the agenda, so.
Second.
And second, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Second tier canvas of the twenty twenty five city schoolie lecture.
Woo hoo.
Hey, those are the results for everyone.
I had a thick person on this night.
Yes, I'm gonna give you Tama.
Good at that job.
Okay. Tama?
Yep, and then there's Marshall. We'll go through those two first and then.
Will you help me do the last one?
That's Grundy, who did?
Blackhawk?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay.
So Mark, you can start.
Um. You may just do election day or?
Do both.
Yeah.
Election day and absentee. Is it just the totals Karen? Just the totals down here for?
Okay.
Yes.
Uh. For all, uh, total votes for write-ins was, uh, thirty six.
So apparently we're doing two fill a vacancy one first?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
At large, two fill of vacancies.
Okay.
Um. Linda Lowery with one oh four. Deb Osborne with thirteen, Megan Witt with twelve, Jennifer Rogge with ten, Adam Bentley with thirteen, under votes six hundred seventy six, over votes are zero for a total of eight hundred sixty four, so it would be Linda Lowery would be elected. Oh, is I go up too fast?
So that was just Tama County?
That was, yep, just Tama.
The votes?
So far I got Grundy here too.
Okay, so you're ready for Grundy next?
I am, yeah.
Okay, so then I have Adam Bentley with ninety two.
Great.
Anything else on there I need to read to you?
Uh, I got Linda Reardon with three.
Correct.
Okay. So. Total, so how many?
So now you need Blackhawk and Marshall County.
Right, so, but I'm looking at the totals here.
Down at the bottom?
Yeah, down at the bottom, that would be Linda. Linda is short, Adam Bentley would have been the one that got elected.
Yep, so that's after, so what Mark read was only Tama County.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the totals down here.
Yes.
Alright, I need Marshall County for Adam and Linda.
That mine then?
Yep.
Okay, so I don't get any names, it's just, is that what it's supposed to be?
Yeah, so that would just be, cause I.
It's just this one?
Yep, so it would be.
Okay, so Linda Lowery. Uh, election day was twelve. Absentee was three, fifteen was the total votes.
For Marshall?
For Marshall.
Was Linda receiving one vote? Was one?
Yeah, Linda receiving one by the email.
Alright, thank you. Um, and Adam had?
Twelve and Blackhawk, no, excuse me, sixth and Blackhawk.
Great. So we're, we're done with Marshall, correct?
Yes.
Okay, cause he had zero in Marshall. Alright, Blackhawk, he, Adam had six.
Correct.
Linda, I, what did you have for Linda?
I don't see any for Linda.
That's what I got, okay. And then Grundy, who's got Grundy?
Grundy was ninety two for Adam.
Yep.
Then three for Linda.
Okay, so I'm looking, so Blackhawk has, did you see six for?
Six for Adam.
For An- Adam?
Mm-hmm.
In Blackhawk, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So I have a total of, Adam had a hundred and eleven, and Linda Reardon Lowery had a hundred and eight.
Yeah.
So Adam got elected, is this the one that's gonna be contested? There's three, B?
No.
Do we care about the undervotes and totals and stuff on this email? Or am I done with this?
We're done with that one.
We have to sign the initial?
And I'll go through and do those things for like.
Do they have to sign these or just me?
I guess it's initial, isn't it? Yeah.
So I'm signing this here?
So underneath here, there's not a bunch, not a bunch, not as much as last time.
Right.
But the summary, the abstracts, and then the sort of. That way I'm getting.
And I'm not the chairperson.
No. Correct.
I'm gonna send them back.
Go where?
Are, are you guys gonna add the canvas, that re-cam?
Yep.
Yep.
You're right.
Do I have to canvas the recount?
Um, depends on if things change, then yes, you re-canvas. If nothing changes, then it stays the same. Yep.
I left room for the chairman and the vice chair.
If it's nice. And yours too, if you want to. Maybe just initial yours and.
Oh, you gotta do all of them?
Yeah, we gotta initial everyone. Some of them have two pages, you just do the top page. You sign them all to your.
So everybody does this?
Initials.
But you ended over the markers, Adam. And I'm initialing.
I don't need.
That would know, it's just the write-in ones.
So Linda didn't get it. Okay, I've been issued that one. And all of this is. That would shoot.
Just the top ones, everyone's at a two.
Just top ones?
Yeah.
Rest of junk is, I mean all the rest is. They might be doing that right.
No.
I just. Sorry, I need these all. So you can resort to, uh. Who's that? Mark?
With the circle?
Okay. He used to do a seven, that's out of broken circle. That's yours, yours. Right, there's all your stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are just my initials.
They are. Weird.
I worked, I worked with the president of Newton, we had two M Ds inside circle, my.
So you need to, yeah, you worked it out.
What's that?
That you worked the doctor.
Oh, now enough to run.
Are we gonna miss again?
It's the, so this one is the at-large. This one? Is split off into two pages.
Okay.
Do we know how the, how it worked on Monday?
Karen said that someone said there was audio issues, but I have not gotten to listen to it yet.
Okay. I won't, do me. Direct to the internet and off the screen switches. See if it's the switches. James, buddy.
Okay, so Tampa County first for the at-large.
Who's got that Tampa County?
For Gladbrook, right?
Yes.
I have the Tama County one. Um. Turtles Douglas three ninety eight. Kyle Rasmussen one seventy nine. Megan Witt two twenty five. Amanda Babanat, two twenty nine. Jennifer Rogge four ninety eight. One thirty three write-ins.
What about Linda Reardon Lowery?
Uh, Linda one seventy two.
Okay. But this, is this the write-in through the scanner?
Yeah.
Okay, so one thirty three for the, for the write-ins?
Yes, sir.
Oh, how do we get an over vote?
Someone would have voted for four instead of three.
Okay.
It says.
Hmm.
Do I care about the undervotes? Okay. Now I need Marshall County for, we have a book Ryan, Ryan Beck, director, Mark.
So for Marshall, we got Douglas Rowe was five total votes. Kyle Rasmussen was three.
Yep.
Megan Witt six.
Yep.
Amanda Babanat three.
Yep.
Jennifer Rogge six.
Yep.
One write-in.
Uh. Linda Reardon.
And that was on the last sheet that I gave you.
Okay.
To make a copy.
Yep, okay, one write-in then.
Okay. And then, uh, Blackhawk County?
Okay. Doug with thirty three.
Yep.
Kyle twenty one.
Yep.
Megan twenty nine.
Yep.
Megan twenty five is the one.
Yep.
Jennifer nineteen.
Yep.
Zero write-ins.
It's this one here, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, then, uh, Grundy, got it?
Yep, Doug for. Four eighty four? It's either four eighty four or four sixty four.
Yeah, it's like a four eighty four, yeah.
Okay. That ain't six, kinda wild.
Do you, do you need glasses or something?
They're in on my desk, and I just started using them yesterday, leave me alone.
I will one for Kyle.
Okay.
Four twenty for Megan.
Yep.
Five forty for Amanda.
Yep.
Jennifer four seventy four.
Yep.
Eighty two write-in. One of them for Linda.
The longest one against that and then the other one.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so I have, we're done with it, right?
Yep.
I have a total of nine twenty for Douglas Rowe.
Substantial.
So this is vote for one?
Three.
Three.
The three.
Yep.
So Douglas Rowe had nine twenty, Kyle Rasmussen had seven oh four, Megan Witt had six eighty, Amanda Babanets had seven ninety seven, Jennifer Rogge had nine nine seven, and Linda Reardon Lowery had one seventy four. First, was Linda the one that came from out of county, maybe home school with her kids for a while?
That sure is the one that posted the.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so the winners would have been Douglas Rowe, Amanda Babanet.
Yep.
And Jennifer Rogge.
Correct.
Okay. Got your.
Let's show that please. Please, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But we got the, there was a three vote for Linda Reardon, did we put those with Linda Lowery?
Yes, so it was two different offices. So it was two fill of vacancy was the other one and the rest.
No, under that, under that one, it, there was three for, I, was it Marshall for Linda?
There was only one.
Marshall just won.
Yep.
There's one.
He's just saying like if there's three names we captured.
No, I got, I got. It was Linda Lowery on here and then there was a Linda Reardon.
Oh.
That was read off, those three votes, did I, did that get counted in at the Linda Lowery?
Looks, see, that's her name, Linda Reardon Lowery.
I know, but did we count the ones that, where they wrote in Linda Reardon for her total vote count?
Do you count?
The double check.
As long as you know what they mean.
Being it was a close race, yeah, it's.
Yeah, if that would have changed the outcome.
Yes, it's. Okay, so I am signing, I need to initial this, right?
Sign whatever you want.
I think I'm gonna initial, I mean. Ah, yeah. And then, I need to make sure that, that's marked.
We'll have to make sure mine's, I don't know if I signed all that his from the last one, so after looking through, make sure we got all.
That would go there.
Yes.
Probably three, when there's only three of us.
Well, I had a boss, who would do this? And then those initials.
Makes it pretty.
So make it easy to, that really wasn't easy to forge for. Calm down, I wanted to see the bones of work. Today, aw, man. Yeah, if we're gonna make him do all of them in the second, he's not all the. Wants to be serious. And I think I want them doing like. We contest one of these bills.
That made, yeah.
I mean, I need to ask a question about a hub. Because it's internet only that they need to have to make them work, that hub between you two should be both.
I think so.
So I, I need to ask that question, I want that clear too. I'm not happy. Which one are you, we're ready, we're ready for Tama?
Nope, you're doing public measures.
You use your glasses?
Yeah, you saw Tama.
Okay, I need Tama for yes and nos.
Um, I have Tama County. Yes, one ninety eight.
Yep.
No, six five four, under votes, twelve.
Yep.
Total of eight sixty four.
Correct. Or at least, uh, confirm, I heard that way. Marshall?
Uh, yes, three.
Great.
No, twelve.
Yep.
No, under votes or over votes, so total is fifteen.
Correct, I'm sorry.
Three twelve.
Confirm. Alright, Blackhawk County.
Uh, yes, fifty one, no, eight. Over zero, under zero, fifty nine.
Confirm it. Grundy?
Nine twenty seven, yes. Eighty three, one, four, under zero, over, thousand fourteen.
Great. I have a total for the yes column of one thousand one hundred seventy nine, the no column, seven fifty seven, sixteen total under votes, and a total of one thousand nine hundred fifty two votes, so the yeses.
Add one more.
For the Gladbrook Ryan Beck public measure. So is this the one that's for contestants?
Uh-huh. But it's a sixty percent.
Right, the sixty. So it passed by, what'd we say, sixteen votes, sixteen or seventeen?
Send up.
I don't, no, I don't see, I see a whole lot here.
Cause you have to do, you have to do the math.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent, add the yeses and nos together.
It has the best by sixty percent.
Okay.
And was it like sixty point eight or something, or what was the total?
It was seventeen votes that it passed by.
Seventeen as far as the sixty percent.
Yes.
And so we're contesting that?
Mm-hmm.
We had a sixty percent vote, right?
Correct. But, but if you overturn seventeen of those votes, seventeen of those yes votes, then the change of the outcome, which.
Why would they be able to overturn then?
If the machine doesn't count correctly, if the machine reads differently.
Okay, I'm lost. We're, we're saying machine did correctly, we, we did this, so it's over sixty percent.
Correct.
Why would we equip over seventeen votes?
That's their right to do.
No, I'm, I mean, that's their right, but the answer should be, that's a no-go, period. If it's over sixty. And we confirmed the canv- and the canvas, we've confirmed all the votes.
Mm-hmm.
So who at the state can't understand math? I, I know, I'm being serious.
They're, they're a lawyer.
If they're within fifty votes, the state pays for the recount.
I understand that, but what I don't understand is that if the rule of sixty percent is over that threshold, we canvass and all of these votes match, then it's over sixty percent.
Mm-hmm.
So why are we quibbling over the seventeen?
Well, the recount would just confirm.
Right, that the machine.
So I don't, I don't think it's gonna change it.
Oh, I know. But, but I, but that's what we get, is why have the sixty percent all as a, as a rule, and then you challenge it? When the canvas is confirmed? I, otherwise I could sit there, because we're talking fifty votes, the, the state pays for it, right? Why have the sixty, or the sixty percent out rule?
Well, that's based off what kind of bond it is.
No, I mean, we have the rule, the rule is. Asked by, by the sufficient amount based on our canvas. So are we gonna check all, we're gonna check all five or four of these votes again?
Yeah, they're gonna run all of the ballots.
Run them all through.
Through the.
Check, they're gonna check. I know that don't count, but I mean, just.
I don't care about the other two offices that can adopt, we'll be just looking at just the public measure.
Yeah.
That's what they're requesting to count.
Yeah.
And then she's.
I used to think our system in Iowa was better than everybody, and I have that concerns.
And she said if it matches, we don't have to re-canvas.
Okay. Of course, because we already did. We just. We just did.
Here, sign this one first. I can hand it to everybody else.
Linda could ask a recount, too.
It's too late, deadline's passed.
But even though this canvas is.
Deadline past.
So that don't throw that on my plate either.
So just, what did you say?
Submit it by certain day.
I agree, by the end of quest recount.
Yeah, so when I was doing these yesterday, I'm like, whoa, good thing the deadline's already passed, that deadline was Friday.
Cause, yeah, he put it in before the deadline, so that's why it's still counted, yeah.
Mark, I don't really have a problem with your initials.
Same, actually, I've.
I really didn't have a problem with your initials.
Okay.
And it also says in code that the petitioners have to take the petition to each county.
Yes, which it didn't do.
Which they didn't do, but since the secretary of state's office flubbed and said that we were going to reject it, and we found this rigmarole, they're going to turn a blind eye to that part of the code.
Because I screwed up?
That part, well.
Which isn't right, because.
That's code should be followed no matter what the code is, that's.
No, we don't follow the code, we can do whatever we want.
Don't say that.
English.
Yeah, I get that.
Do we have anybody signed in that is watching this? Good. It's great. How come it's up there?
I think you guys needed to see yourself.
I want to see you all sign here. Does it shows up there? But I'm glad people are watching.
This is South Tama now. And it's between Tama and Powashik.
Okay.
And what is this, what is, these are people's votes?
Yep.
Okay. Tama County.
This, I have school director, district one, Elizabeth Dolzall, fifteen.
Huh? I have more than that.
Uh. Oh, I'm sorry. It goes on to the next page. Three hundred and thirteen.
Okay. And then, um.
Angie Bear, is that how you said that?
Angela.
Angela M. Bear?
Yep.
Two twenty?
I have that.
For total of five fifty.
There's some scattering in there.
Five write-ins.
Okay.
Nineteen hundred votes.
And one over vote, okay, yeah, five, five ages left, I'm confirming. Uh, Powashik.
Easy, zero, 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 zero. That's all zero. All zero, for Elizabeth and Angela.
I'm confirming that.
They just didn't vote then, right, or somebody?
Yeah.
Sorry. They didn't show up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it would have been somebody living out in the country, they only get to vote on the school board.
Oh, so they don't care, their kids don't go to that school or something.
Okay, so I have a total for Elizabeth Dolzall of three thirteen, and for Angela and Bear, two twenty, and this is how many voting? One position, or this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other one, so that shows that Elizabeth Dolzall won that.
Sorry, this one he did, so, okay. Oops, sorry.
We done?
We get to more, but it's still just South Tama, so it's easy.
Just another easy one.
This one is mayor?
Director, district two.
Yeah, I see that. Right, it's Ryan and it's just mayor, that's right, okay. Tama County.
Tama County. Director, district two, to fill vacancy. Total for Joe Vanus, four eighty.
Confirm that.
Eight write-ins, seventy under vote for total by fifty.
And then for Powashik? So no one paid for totally, right, at all?
Powashik zero, on this one again.
Okay.
Yeah, zero for Joe and no write-ins, no under votes.
Okay.
Total zero.
I'm confirming that. So total for Joe was four hundred and eighty, guess he got it.
You're, you're behind, I'm signing some of those.
I'm not, I didn't understand it.
Don't worry about my signature, start signing your own.
Put your own signature.
One, two, three. I screwed up on the mayors and I signed it.
I didn't even notice.
No, I noticed, so I have a problem when I'm signing my name after a while. I have a problem when I hit the V. I, I have a mind block on that ID. I, I'll still sign it, but it's like it's, it's stunted, and so it doesn't look good. Somebody inspected my files with Iceland. Iceland, there was a. I know it's Iceland. Who's this D W J? This could. Oh, yeah. I, I'm, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Um, for Dana, Dania, right?
Dana. Uh, total write-in sixty three, total for Dana is twenty seven, Luther Hellier by, for fine. Under votes. Four sixty three, over with zero, total five five eight.
Confirming. Uh, Powashik?
All zero.
I mean, the, the check marks in boxes.
Somebody's gotta do it.
So it looks like sixty three individual or different names. So Donna Kehana, is it, is it?
Dana Kehana.
Say that again?
Dana Kehana. Yeah, like, like Kehana Reese.
Kehana, okay.
Yeah.
She wins with twenty seven votes, I'm really happy for her.
Yeah.
No, no one showed up at that voting precinct or, or.
So it's just, um, Powashik County residents that go to South Tama, that are just. I didn't, so it doesn't surprise me.
They could have voted and just not voted for that measure, right, if they don't care.
When did, when did, when did they?
Or what it's still. They wouldn't even have anything else on their ballot, couldn't. Just pool board, always check.
Oh.
So basically, it sounds like no one even showed up.
Yeah, you're right.
Somebody sit there?
Cause there's nothing else to vote for on this election.
And we didn't, Powashik County.
Right.
Did, but they have, so it's like different ballot styles at the precinct. So it's just nobody did those ballots.
One year, when I was working in Nebraska, we had over five hundred and fifty people show up to vote. The next, at the two-year mark, the first person was a city clerk, she came in at eleven o'clock for her lunch break. There were total of thirteen votes. And we were there for fourteen hours.
Wow.
Very disheartening, and I had to write it, I had to log it with my name in the.
They had one that they, that they pulled in out of the hallway. Out of the squawdy for an election, they, they had one voter, and they actually pulled that guy, you know, he was out the hallway, and they're like, hey, I made a vote.
Funny.
And that was the only one that got.
Wow. Are we done?
No, yeah.
No, we're done, we gotta do the.
The new thing.
Oh, yes.
We gotta do that new thing that, uh, as part of this, uh.
No, wait, let's, let's finish this one, let's get.
Finish the resolution.
For the resolution for the.
Okay. Okay. So we did a second tier canvas on you.
Correct, that's a second tier canvas.
Yep, so you approved resolution eleven eighteen twenty twenty five eighty.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Who has it?
What's that?
I don't see it.
Oh, it's in here.
It's on our, uh, this, you know. Get up toothpuffs.
Throw the front back.
Okay, now I see it.
So, chairman? So Tama?
Hi.
Hi.
Donal?
Hi. What's your pass? Now we need to set a.
You just need to approve or agree.
Yes.
So I made the notion that we approve the recount of the.
Petition for a recount for the by the Ryan Beck public measure.
What you just said, that's what I said.
And then Heather seconded.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those much curious, so that's been set. Any other business come before the board, no public comments.
It's not on here. But I've had requests for. Approving some stuff in my IT realm. And my, my question is, do you have a problem that I'm approving stuff? I mean, at what point do you want me to bring it to the board and say, hey, I want approval for, you know, twenty thousand dollars, or that's not that high. It's about five thousand right now, but I've got requests. Some of this for, for doing the connecting us up to the internet, um, there's a. There's some, some of that's, some of that nine one one guys gotta pay for, a part of it we should pay for. And then, um, I'm looking at. Two monitors for nine one one, they're expensive. They're huge, but they, they, they already bought and put one in, and it takes everything off their desk.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm seriously looking at, at doing that out of our, our ARPA funds.
They should buy it, we should transfer.
Transfer money over, okay.
Put that B, right?
It's coming out of my, my.
Buying with the ARPA funds, we just take it out of our ARPA fund, no transfer.
It does have to be in their account? Okay.
So the, the reason I asked the question is.
Technically, it's not our property, cause it's their, they have their own overseeing board. So they would approve the expenditure, I would think, but.
The, my, you're talking about.
Isn't it the same way with public health, didn't we have to send them money, we just paid it directly, okay?
So, so the reason I asked the question is, I'm being very judicious in what I do with our money. But I, at some, what point do you want, I mean.
If you just update us, I think if there are big expenditures coming up, that would be helpful.
So basically, I'm looking at about five thousand dollars to.
Are you okay with that?
And they're all ARPA funds right now? I mean, being their ARPA funds, I'd say, I mean, if we had an IT director, they'd have to come to us. So it's like, it's depends, does the public wanna know, do we wanna know? I mean, I, I trust what you're doing, but also, I don't know if there's a limit, if it's over ten thousand or something like that, or twenty, I mean. If we didn't have ARPA, it'd be different, but like.
I'm saying all funds are already though designated as being for IT, so I mean, that's.
As long as it's.
Here's the thing, I'm going to be very judicious in what we do, but I wanna make sure that the board knows. You know, I'm, I'm expending money, and like I said, we had to buy four computers, which is part of our, the IT world. That for the Windows eleven issue, um, then there was. Then a laptop. So ba- basically, I'm trying not to spend any money unless we have to, cause I fully, and if I can't pay for, I can't pay for a, and I'm not calling the director, I'm calling. Technician, I can't pay for a technician out of the ARPA. That has to come out of our.
Right, yeah. Could he just, could you send like a FYI to us, as long as we don't deliberate, you could just say, hey, I'm doing this, and then if anyone's like, hey, David. Let's bring it to a board, I have a concern, then we could, that might make the most sense.
Trying to share up a vehicle.
Yeah.
Even though it might be electric, no.
If there was a report that you wanted to do, like monthly, would you do your monthly reports, since you're the IT guy? To just say what the balance is, what we've expended, what, you know. Coming up.
That'd be good.
Yeah, just as a monthly report.
I'll do that. I talked with Karen yesterday about the budgeting, she's got the numbers, did you send those out to everybody yet?
I have not.
What? Are you dealing with some cam thing? So anyway, she's finally got the numbers in, so there's no excuse for the department heads.
Department heads aren't being counted, their budget sheets they should be working on. But then David said to send out, once they get their budget sheets, kind of planned out to send them to me that I can forward to you guys before you actually do the work.
So I, we haven't been talking about it, but since I spent so much time in here, things pop into my head and I set my chair down next to her desk and say. Where are we on this and this and this, so.
Okay.
I'm trying, I'm trying to push that a little bit forward, so we're not in January again.
Yes, so we need the figures for health insurance now that I can send out to everybody to put in their budgets, but we just don't know salary-wise.
So just start with zero and end with zero.
When do we have to work on that, the salary?
I think you guys should be working on it anytime if you want to budget it.
Once it's due by, though, just before people put their budgets together then, right, or before the end of the year?
Before we submit our budget to the state.
Which is March.
Which means we need to get our James from Marshall, if he can help do that, I, I would love to do it.
Talk to him with, I have to talk to him about something.
Yeah, see if he can do that, that'd be great.
The sooner the better, just to get a better picture of what the budget.
Yes, cause then once we get that, we can understand what it all looks like and what its thoughts are there.
Yeah.
Make our.
So do we, do we know?
Plus we need to do negotiations yet for.
Yeah, we have the union negotiations, we have that too. And then I've had a complaint that Paul hasn't gotten back to some folks on FMLA. I think it was FMLA stuff. So. I don't know how we can get hold of him, and I, I haven't, I haven't had to talk with him. So I'm pretty much taking that on.
I usually just email it.
Okay. So I think we've got a couple of FMLA issues going on that, I don't know, he actually knows about them now, cause. They've asked and he has a contact in the back. So. I don't, I'm, like I said, I, I, I don't even deal with him anymore, so. Just wanna make sure we're not. Let anything slip through the cracks. So, does he work for you?
Maybe or you guys, you know.
Okay, I'm starting to talk about somebody here.
I know one FMLA. Issue, and we're waiting for a date to pass.
Okay.
Things are time restricted.
Okay.
The date. Has passed.
All right, um. I don't think there's anything other else. We're, we've had to fix some stuff. For the phones, for some lines, but my understanding and the answer I got back is, if they have an internet connection. Soon as they plug the phone in, they support it right, it's them. And then they just plug that other cable from there into the computer. And so I don't know why it would work. As long as they got internet, so the, the other issue would be if there's too much resistance on the line, it could cause a problem. But that's why I want, I mean, move forward, I want, I want this done. I got other IT stuff to fix.
Okay.
I was done, Dave, my.
Anything else?
I have got.